And you thought that was an accident?
Yeah.
So the housekeeping we have, we're going to have, what is our housekeeping we have? You said it's a special?
Explain the public comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, there will be a presentation. I think it's 3.1, is that what's listed on the agenda? Yes, it's a 3.1 presentation. We had an option to make it a presentation, but we decided to make it the agenda item. Therefore, the public will have an opportunity to comment on it after the presentation is completed, but there will be no, just general public comment for items not on the agenda today.
Thank you very much. So, item 1.1, closed session, government code section 54954.5.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I hate to interrupt you, I was paying attention to something else. I have two subsequent meetings that I would like to have to be attended before we get started. The first one is a closed session item. This is to move and discuss and/or take action to add a closed session regarding COVID-19 and find that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The chair conceived that the COVID cases are on the rise and the COVID team needs to be given direction prior to the next meeting.
So I will, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Grove and a second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Finley?
Yep.
Thank you. Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
That passes 5-0.
Second?
And Madam Chair, the second one is a normal agenda item. And I move to discuss and/or take action regarding acceptance of a proposal to convert the board chambers into Zoom room and find the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that the process needs to start now due to the continued increase in COVID cases in order for the project to be completed by the end of the calendar year when the funds have been expended by, would have to be expended by. And that's approximately $80,000 from Paris.
Would you like to make that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Grove, second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown? I believe that was a yes. Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Grove, so going back to our closed session, item 1.1, government code section 54954.5, parentheses C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases, one, Trinity Action Association Incorporated versus County of Trinity at all, Trinity County Superior Court case number 19CV001. Is there anybody on the Zoom that would like to make a public comment before we bring it back to the board? No?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, state your name for the record.
This is Lisa Wright.
Welcome, Lisa Wright.
Lewis, let me, I'm going to double echo here, one second. Okay, just so I understand, this public comment is for items not on the agenda or only for this closed session?
Only for this closed session. We will take public comment when we go back into open session after the presentation. After the presentation, we will have, we will have public comment on the presentation.
Okay.
So this is just for the closed session.
I do have a public comment regarding the closed session for TAA litigation. I do have a grave concern that the interference by TAA with the cannabis cultivation in particular program is on the brink of causing this program to collapse. So my concern is that we are not being adequately represented, yet we are paying for representation out of the cannabis funds. But I don't feel that the cannabis farmers or the cannabis community is actually, or really Trinity County at large economically is being adequately represented. We have heard the contract attorney Derek Cole basically agree with everything that TAA has asked for, including now going so far as to say that provisional licenses are now allowed to be issued, which goes contrary to Trinity Code that we have all fought very hard for, you all as well as the farmers to get enacted and has been operational for over four years, many pickups, of course, and many issues, but there's nothing that prohibits local jurisdictions from issuing provisional licenses, interim licenses, et cetera, during the effort to work towards CEQA compliance. So I will reiterate that we need representation that thoroughly defends the cannabis interests in our economy as a whole, and we are not receiving that with our contract attorney Derek Cole. I actually don't even recall how this was put out to bid and how he was selected other than being just anointed through our county council's recommendations and actions. So with that, I urge you to seek additional legal counsel outside second opinions that better represent the interests of the cannabis community, and I believe in the community at large, given that you have several hundred small businesses in peril currently, given the current position of the county and this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Are there any other members from the public waiting to speak on the closed session specifically?
I'd like to make a comment if possible.
Yes, and then I believe that we're getting feedback. So when you're not commenting, I won't start your timer, somebody on the line, we're getting feedback and noise, so if you're not speaking, can you please mute your side? Thank you. Please state your name for the record, continue.
This is Dan DeVooen from Capeport. I'm commenting on the backlog. The town is facing a lawsuit as a result of their ineptitude with the CEQA process, and you've got growers who have completed individual site-specific CEQUAs that have submitted applications to the cannabis planning department with absolutely zero motion, even after invoking the Criminal Streamlining Act for the project. So you guys are about to get it both ways, both for CEQA non-compliance and ignoring growers who already have completed CEQA. I highly urge you to take a close look at the way that you guys are handling your environmental compliance policies and not piecemeal things together. You'll be facing yet another lawsuit, either from growers, TAA, or not even stacking from the beginning with the EIR you guys are looking at. And let's just, you know, get our act together when it comes to this program. It's been so long of fumbling that we really need to get it together before you guys are just stymied with so many lawsuits, you don't know what to do with yourselves. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
If there's anyone else wishing to give public comment on this item, speak now, please.
Seeing none, we're going to go into closed session, and I'm told that we have an approximate time of 10 o'clock.
It's 11:00.
So we will resume at 10:00 a.m. this morning. Thank you.
Is that running up? Anybody not ready?
Welcome back to open session on March, or excuse me, December 1st, 2020, and we have changed the order for those who are joining us with Zoom. We are going to go directly into Dr. Kuhn's presentation. Item 3.1, county administrative office, receive an update from county administrative officer Richard Kuhn regarding a plan for the cannabis department to increase efficiencies, unknown fiscal impact. And was there a change-up on the backup that you want to address?
Yeah, there was a few edits in the PowerPoint sets that's been put online, but they're minor insignificant, I can point them out as we get to all of this, just a few additions, but nothing that changes the message of the presentation.
Okay, so all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Board, Richard Kuhn, county administrative officer. I was tasked with developing a kind of a jumping off point as to what we can do with our cannabis program, as we've had many changes over the years and trying to streamline. So I met with a few members of the cannabis program, I met with our staff, and as I said, I have this kind of jumping off point. These are kind of my review, overview, and some recommendations, but as you'll see within the, within this, I'm going to task Director Hunter with establishing a steering committee with local growers to work with her to help strengthen us in our ordinances and our policies and procedures. So with that, anyway, we've started, so we'll jump to the first slide. Just going to do a kind of an overview of where we are and where the program stands. Current structure includes one planning director, 75%, one senior planner, one associate planner, 50%.
Excuse me, Richard, I'm getting notes that they can't hear you very well. Can you maybe move the microphone a little bit closer to you? I'm sorry.
All right. I don't hear the, I can't hear myself in the room. Okay. So as I said, current structure, one planning director, 75%, one senior planner, one associate planner, 50%, co-compliance lead, 50%, two co-compliance specialists, one accounting technician, one administrative coordinator, two, and two administrative coordinator ones. Next slide essentially just breaks it down to where we were in 2019, 2020, and into 2021. So it shows we have 8.5 staff in the cannabis division. Just as a reference, I thought I'd go ahead and pull some, because we get quite often other areas that are running cannabis programs. I mean, there was one in the newspaper, say, in the San Diego, and we had nine staff and a million dollar budget, kind of apples and tractors, they're not even apples and oranges because they don't issue cannabis cultivation license, they only issue outlet license, and they only issue 40 of them, and over 40, only 20 have been issued, so not real comparable to ours. So we're in with Mendocino County, and Mendocino currently right now has eight staff allocated to their cannabis program with five vacancies. So they're having the turnover problem that we're having also. I also went and pulled Mendocino's review of applications over the last few years. Cannabis applications in 1617, they reviewed, what submitted to them was 532, in 1718, 110, in 1819, 315, and in 1920, 180. So they're kind of on the downward path that we are too, they're suffering all the same issues that we're having in this area, so we're not giving to the cannabis program. Next slide gives an overview, and the most question we get the most is, where does this money go? So I weighed out just in real simple terms, code enforcement expenses, which means not just the officers, but the equipment, the vehicles, everything associated to code enforcement, and this is 1220, that is 1920, I'll do in the edits, is right under $500,000 for the cannabis salaries and benefits, just for the staff, which I just listed at 8.5, 8.15 staff, is just above 775,000 for consulting and for county council, which means we have our assent and all the different contractors we've had, worked on our EIR, worked on our consult with us to help us get some of the processes through, 543,000, and then other cannabis expenses, and that's just the cost of doing business, that is the building, that is the auditor, the HR, all the different central service departments within the county that bill out, which gives us grant over $2.2 million. And that's been pretty flat for the last few years, and that's based on the $5,000 licensing fees where we draw that from, that doesn't include taxes for our code enforcement.
We have a question. Supervisor Grove?
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Supervisor Grove, because we have people saying they can't hear us already, could you speak directly into your mic?
All screwed up.
All screwed up, too.
I want everybody here. So in the county council services, does that include the code enforcement arm of their services, which really would be in code enforcement, or is that built into the code enforcement expenses?
So you're asking the abatement portion of county council?
Yes, so, I mean, which is a sizable number.
Like, does he say yes or no? Yes.
It's included in cannabis department and is not funneled through the code enforcement.
Suzy, for the public, if you want to use a microphone on some end, so we are totally able to communicate transparently to our public. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Suzy Hawkins, business manager for the admin office? Yes, Supervisor Grove, the, all of county council's costs are in the cannabis budget. They are not split out between cannabis compliance, general cannabis side, and the code enforcement citation, supply, abatement, any of that side.
Okay, so.
That's included in the 543,000.
Included in the 543.
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Finley and Supervisor Brown, if you have any question, would you please feel free to interrupt, because that's how we're going to do it, we're not going to wait to the end. We will address the questions as we're going. Thank you.
Okay, as before, we go to current program workflow. Intake and review of applications and documents by admin staff, directors' use permits is by admin, variances, documentation of CEQA compliance or conditional use permits from the planning commission, routed up to the associate planner, senior planner, and or director. Development permits be tied through departments into cannabis workload and workflow, I mean other departments, so we have, besides the county, some of these permits have to go through the water board and other outside agencies. Information management system. Project information includes applications, supporting documents, and information is managed in multiple locations. Project files, both electronic and paper, is currently managed and directed by one admin clerk. Information is managed in an online licensing permit data smart gov, and a variance, and a variety of Excel spreadsheets, in folders, on shared drives, and in paper files. So this is one of the issues we're having right now, is there isn't a uniformed, one-size-fits-all for the application group, and that's why, as we talk about some of the files, we have issues with some of our files because of the process that we collect the information. Next, communication. Externally, communication with applicants, licensed consultants, and members of the public is generally done if an inquiry is received. General information regarding the cannabis program is contained on the website, which consists of one main page that has linked to different documents, which information can be found. Internally, communication within the division is generally done as issues or questions arise, and staff, staff talks directly to one another to get questions answered or problems solved. And again, this will be, we'll talk about this a little bit later, this is one of the issues that we're finding, is consistency of information both inside, external, and internal. CEQA, CEQA compliance for license has been applied differently throughout the life of the program. After the passing of AB, AB or SB, I don't know if it's SB.
SB.
Yeah, so that's my correction. SB 97 on July of 2019, there have been different approaches applied, but CEQA requirements have to be completed in order to issue license renewals and/or transfers. In 2020, requirements for CEQA compliance continue to change, as we know, we're getting ready to present the EIR, that will trigger some more changes with the CEQA compliance and our process. Next one, fees. The fee structure has been established for the cannabis program and is included as part of the existing ordinance. Organizational structure. Current organizational size and structure of the Trinity, of the Trinity County is not sufficient to meet the current workload demands, and we'll go through staffing shortly and some of our recommendations, but that has been really our key to seal and why we keep having log jams, we just don't have that mid-level professional staff to give a review. A lot of the documents are going to be viewed by admin staff, who should be dealing more in the paperwork shuffle as opposed to reviewing complex questions. Workflow. Currently no defined process is for managing workflow. Due to the overturn over the last few years, most of the work is done by staff in a way they feel is best. There hasn't been a uniform process or review, so as we have the staff come in, trained the best we can, but sometimes it is a, it is a system of take your best guess. No process established for prioritizing projects, timelines to complete specific tasks. Projects are not assigned to individuals in a way to ensure accountability. Program requirements involved, and again, this is just kind of overview of what I'm seeing and make some recommendations, the program requirements evolved over the time without clear direction, new policies, due to the complexity of a project, specific experience or skills are needed in order to process and process a proposal or resolve a land use conflict. And again, that's where I'll get back to, where we just don't have those specialty staff. Review of preliminary CEQA determinations or interpret regulations as it applies to specific projects where a conflict may exist and be unclear. Currently, heavy administration and compliance staff leave minimal planning level staff to handle more complex workflows. Indecent roles and responsibilities are not clearly defined. On to information management system. Information management is crucial, not a single location, not a single location to get all of the information about a project. Work is duplicated by managing data in more than one, one place, in more than one person. It can be a waste of time, money, and increase opportunities for error. It's difficult to understand where the program is as a whole, or run accurate reports at a given time, because a complete and current project record does not exist. The administrative burden on the county to manage files and data for each project becomes very intense. There's no, that we're getting.
We're trying to deal with the feedback, give us a moment.
Something like that. Not yet. I, difficult to understand where the project is as a whole, or run accurate reports at a given time, because a complete and current project record does not exist. Administrative, administrative burden on the county to manage these files and data for each project is very intensive. And there is no, geopartial data exists for projects within the cannabis program, which makes it difficult for geographical understanding of program across the county. The center's ability to consider potential cumulative impacts when evaluating individual projects. Moving on to the external. No external protocols. External requests opt in though to all staff, can result in a multiple, multiple responses, requests for information not getting to the right person or the right response at all. Through the lack of organization and consistent process, that often communicates information that is incorrect or different than another staff. So we do have, again, without having the technical staff we have, we're tasking admin staff to answer some very technical questions, so they're doing the best they can, this isn't a reflection on them, it's just the lack of the ability to have those, those technical staff to answer the individual and particular questions. No FQ, have been prepared for staff to ensure consistency on communications, and communications on status of license is absent unless an inquiry is received, though often those requests go unanswered, again, with traffic issues. Okay, so before we go into some of my recommendations, do I have any questions or comments? Okay, and again, these are, this is a, this is a jumping off point, reviewing with staff, what they felt would assist the program, and some ideas I felt would be a starting point. So, short term, I mean, now to six months, right after that, first of all, except no incomplete, only except complete applications. We have a stack of applications sitting in our, in planting the cannabis that are not complete. They may take 30 or 40 hours to go through to find that they're missing several important documents, and in next application, we end up has the entire document, so we end up wasting a week, a week and a half time on an incomplete application when we had a complete application sitting right behind it. So my recommendation is, if they, they submit an incomplete application, we don't accept it, we return immediately at the desk, we don't even bring it in. We go through and return all incomplete applications, so the staff, so the staff isn't overwhelmed looking at 150 different files that are, that aren't complete. I'm recommending for a short time, I'm going to move Angie from Ag for approximately six months, even though I don't know if David saw this or not, we might borrow David again for a while to help with the margin or reveal, because that's where our log jam is right Begin recruiting for four, four planners, they have to be senior planners, but they have to be, we need planners that prefer to be senior planners, because those are the specialty staff we're missing, and two environmental health specialists, so they would not be, not at a Christie level, but more of a David level, where they have the ability to review our CEQA and make determinations. I'd like to see us hire a contractor to work with Kim until staff is available, so she can, so they can review that appendix G of the CEQA, because that's where, that's where again, the log jam is.
Is it G or C, appendix?
It was C that I put in, and that was one of the corrections.
Okay, thank you.
It should have been G, right? It's a wrong letter. Uniform regulations develop an internal and external policy for accepting and processing license. Do not put license into the system until a license are issued, so no pending. And this came from our code enforcement, they say they have a real different time, they'll be out in the field, and they'll look up a license, and it'll say pending, so they don't know if that means they're dismissing one document, it's missing several documents, or we just haven't issued a license yet. They would like nothing to be on there except license has been issued, and this make them, make them, much easier for them to determine what their, what their process is when they're out in the field. Okay? Looking to purchasing new software or upgrading our software, and this I'll talk with staff, because we do a smart gov, from what I understand, talking with them, they can do any things we want to do, we just have to be trained to do it and upgrade that software. So what we can do is start accepting applications online, the applicant can upload their information, it'll be verified by a staff member, but they can upload that information and reduce time to the counter, and very much like the state does, if they don't complete their application and have everything within 90 days, then the system boots them out and have to start all over again. We do have a problem with, with applications just sitting and waiting on information that we're not getting, and it just log jams. So this would streamline that process and be a limited timeline as to what, determine their documentation. This is what I spoke with, with staff concerning greenhouses, this is just my idea regarding getting a jump on some of the infrastructure for our growers. Now, I understand that building the greenhouse is part of their CEQA compliance, so they would not be able to start breaking ground until, until their CEQA determinations were done, but it would be nice if we could work that into the system, so it's not as a completion of a license, they can actually start their infrastructure somewhere prior to receiving their license, but with the CEQA determination done, they can start their infrastructure. Because there's many times right now that we don't get a license out until July or August, how are they going to spend two months to get their, their greenhouses done? So it would be nice if we can figure out a happy medium to detach the greenhouse permits from the issuing of a license, but still in the CEQA process. Compliance officers and admin assume the duty of sending notice of violations, so we coordinate with the code enforcement. We've had several complaints in the last coordinate with the code enforcement. We've had several complaints in the last year of noise and violations generators, generators and lights. And we just don't have the process. And who is, who steps up and does that? So I'd like to find a clear process. So when someone complains about a generator running online or lights running online, they contact possibly code enforcement or compliance. If it's a situation where it's a, it's a noise violation, something like that, it's not a legal issue. And compliance can go out, they can view it, see it, and they're tasked with send that notice of violation out. We've been, I think, a little derelict in not sending out our notice of violations to those that are not participating in the program properly. This was another one from our enforcement guys, that they like the whole licensed and unlicensed to the same standard. And what they're talking about sometimes is they'll go to a legal grow and cite someone for fencing violation and across the street there's a illegal grow. And it makes it difficult because they point across the street and say, well, how come this guy over here who's illegal, why aren't you just arresting him? He does have a fence. So I'm not sure how that would work, but that's, that's something that staff will have to figure out. But there are some, some differences in the way we treat our legal and illegal. So those are a way we can kind of uniform that if, is there a violation, we can give to non-licensed growers the same as we do with some of our licensed growers. So again, that's just a jumping off point. These are just some things that have been brought to my attention. And they'd like to see if we can uniform some of our, our non-compliant and compliant growers. They also like to see us just go to six plants, period. So it doesn't matter the size of property. When they pull up, if there's, if it's not licensed and there's eight plants, it's a violation. They pull up, it's not licensed, it's six plants. It's easy. They don't have to, they don't have to look up and say, well, they're on three quarters of an acre. So they could have three plants or on an acre and a half, they could have. So they don't have to do all the determination of, and pull up to see what the lot size is. It's just six plants, the end. Moving on. With the hopeful completion of our EIR shortly, we'll develop a clear path forward under current environmental and, and the ordinance for the SEQA consultants. So what I'm asking is, and the next one is where it explains a little more. I want to, I spoke with Kim yesterday and to advise her, and her back. And what I've asked her to do is create a seven-person steering committee made up of local cannabis industry leaders to advise on cleaning up the ordinance and license process. She would work with them to streamline some of the, because the other ones that are, they're in the process, the other ones are in the program. She could kind of work with them and give their suggestions on how we could, like, streamline a process and make it much quicker and get buy-in from them as opposed to us feeling adversarial with the cannabis community. I'd really like to have them give me a solution. So coordinate with Kim for the third party interim, who are from both ordinances and with Kim's expertise review, clean up the lineup ordinance that's closer to some of the state program guidelines. Revis and clean up the ordinance. So staff feels comfortable throughout the entire application process. Develop a written manual regarding the application process with their understanding of CEES and SEQA compliance of staff and clients, know what is, what is, what is covered under our authority. Complete a fee study on the true licensing value of proposed staffing. So right now, we, we have a older fee study based on our projected staff. But what I'd like to do is, is have Trey come back, do a complete fee study based on the additional staffing, including the planners and the environmental health specialist with the fully-staffed code enforcement, fully-staffed compliance and the admin staff, and find a true value for what our license is. This should be a net zero program. We should be using general fund for this. So I would like to have a, a true fee study. So we know, are we charging enough? Charging too much or not charging, not charging enough? So have that done shortly. And then let's see. My personal feeling is we start, we stagger our license, have two renewals, and license are accepted between December 1st and March 31st. We had both sides of the logic on that, both sides. We just did an annual based on when, how they applied. There's a logic behind that. My belief is if we set a deadline that they have applications in by March 31st, we get them out and everybody is licensed by the time they start putting plants in the ground. And we don't, we don't run into that where someone's license expiring in September and it runs into the issues with the state. So this way we would uniform that all license will be accepted between December 1st and March 31st. Medium term, so it's the six months to 18 months. Begin remodeling of a new building, new cannabis planting, building and environmental help in. Acquire or upgrade, after I did this, talked with staff, that the, the system we have is capable of doing what they need. We just, we've started utilizing the entire system and being trained in. So we would upgrade the system so we could move to a online application process. Completion of the fee study to find out exactly what this program should be costing us. Staff up the planners and environmental health specialists. My recommendation to the board through our next budget hearing, well, we did have the cannabis tax passed. So we are anticipating a small increase in general fund. Up until now, we've had no discretionary general fund. So it's prevented us from being able to staff up to where we, we need. So we couldn't get ahead of it. So with that, my recommendation will be to use the cannabis revenues to front-load the cannabis program, to hire the staff. And then when we do finish the fee study, we change the fees and it'll become net zero. And that funds, we'll relieve those funds to be used for, for other aspects. But at first, my recommendation to the board in our next budget round will be to, to front-load the cannabis program and use, use those fundings. Bring forward a retail ordinance. We're going to do stacking and then task our consultant and Kim with developing equity ordinance. So we can start applying for some of the funding out there that's available through, through the equity ordinance. I know that the CNO received almost $2 million last year from their equity ordinance and after the grant. And then bring forward... Did I skip one? Oh, yes, I did. I'm sorry. I'll come back to that one, too. And then bring forward a retail ordinance. And then what I skipped is fully-staffed code enforcement with three deputies requesting that the sheriff assign two deputies at all times to compliance to the, to the officers we have right now because of, of lack of patrol. We've had to pull our, our code enforcement to, to other duties as, with the, with the August fire, that kind of stuff. But I know we just had three of the people we hired out of the academy just finished their FTO. So we have three more deputies on the streets. Thank you Sheriff Jackson for being proactive in that. But with that, it will relieve some of that having to pull our code enforcement. So it'd be nice if we could have a guarantee of two code enforcement at all times. All right, long term. Again, this is what some of the other areas are doing. And again, jumping off point, but stop licensing cannabis and move to a, to issuing cannabis business permits. I know it sounds like semantics, but there is a difference in a process in which we license business permits. It is a little quicker process. And with that, we can move some of the, the burden of the application process to our Ag department. So Kim oversee the creation of the general plan, designate, and designate the Ag cannabis land as eligible, non-eligible. So what I mean by that is, right now, there's, there's variances in, in our, in order to, to grow a different piece of property. When we go through our, our general plan, I'm hoping we designate just cannabis Ag, non-cannabis Ag. So we're not dependent on variances. We're dependent on SEQA compliance and, and designate a land. I like this idea. This is another one that is, is a talking point. But I believe that we, in our general plan, we designate districts three, four, and five as our cannabis Ag, eliminating district one and two. District two is primarily Weaverville. And district one, we get up into Lewiston and our Trinity Center areas. That, my understanding, many of those folks aren't excited about cannabis that area. So I believe if we designate one and two as non-cannabis Ag, and three, four, and five, we have the best of both worlds. You have those people that want to move to Trinity County and not be around cannabis. They know where it is, should increase those property values because they'll know that their neighbors aren't going cannabis. Or if you have those individuals that want to move to Trinity County and become involved in cannabis, they know district three, four, and five. So I think it would increase those property values. So I think we'd, we'd get the best of both worlds if we're able to do something similar to that. Not necessarily, may not be as simple as this, but something similar to that. Those that are in the district, if we did this, those that would be in district one and two, we'd have to assist the license holders in their moving their farms and assist with, assist with them getting out of that area and maybe give incentives and discounts a license for a while until we can assist them in moving their operations to a cannabis Ag land. Again, this is a, I don't know if it's controversial or not, but I believe once we have the general plan developed, we no longer set our license at 530. We set our license at whatever land is available for cannabis. If it's a cannabis Ag land, then, then it's cannabis appropriate. So it would, it would eliminate having just 530. You may have more, may have less depending on, of the general plan finds is, is appropriate land. Number of license allowed on a parcel would be tied to setbacks and zoning with no variance acceptance, demonstrating water availability and after SEQA determination. So again, what I'm saying there is when we, when and if we allow stacking, right now, we have numbers of license that could be on a particular parcel. This would be set by the size of the parcel. So if someone has a 400-degree parcel and they can have setbacks to have more than two or three license on there or, or license sizes, it would be appropriate because it would be done by setbacks and again, availability to water and environmental impacts. And then eventually move the, move the cannabis application process from planting to Ag with the planning and building would be doing, would be taking care of the land use and the variances. And our Ag would be doing the applications and inspections. So it would be a hybrid. Hopefully, in the timeframe I got that done, and be happy to answer any questions. I know I'm going to do it pretty fast.
So Supervisor Gross, do you want to start us out with any questions?
Within the completion of the EIR, we have, you talked about aligning ordinance, aligning ordinance for the state licensing program. I, I think I understand what you're saying there, but it worries me since the state licensing program says to make all land use decisions part of the county process. I hope you're taking that in consideration and not just saying that we won't do that sort of thing. And I think I'll come to a question sooner or later here. And there is talk a couple of years ago, and this is kind of a big picture issue, is within that state licensing program, the county do, do an MOU once we get stabilized with the state, that we work closer together on doing compliance issues. So our, our guys could do state work and their guys could do county work to spread. If a licensed grower was doing something illegal in water, poisoning the water, we just don't say, well, that's a state problem. And so we had, in initial discussions, we had some interest from the state in doing that. But of course, you know, that's, that would be under the long term. But so I guess my question is, is that something you could look into?
Absolutely. I just wrote that down. And I say, this is kind of a jumping off point. And as I stated, I would like Kim to develop a steering committee so we can get assistance from, from other experts beyond our own staff. So yeah, this is, I'm afraid what this is going to be is an ongoing list that we're going to continue to add to. But this is just kind of a jumping off point.
And then your two-year license, I don't see why we wouldn't go to a three-year with that, you know, for...
Yeah, after I put two-year, everybody said, why isn't it a three? And I said, I don't know. So it's something that we can continue to...
And so, and I have a little bit of concern about your, your group of seven special interest oversight without being a stakeholder group. So I understand that, that special interest groups have the most understanding of how licensing is most effective. But it seems to me definitely them being a part of it, of the group, that there should be some mutual non-bias, in my opinion, my humble opinion.
Sure. And I'd say we'll task Kim with that. And it'll be something we'll bring to the board for approval of the recommended, we'll make a recommendation probably to the board of the individuals. So we probably, I don't want to prolong it and make it into an 18-month application process, but we would like to have a group of experts that would be solution oriented as opposed to just kind of the county side issuing their license.
So all in all, I'm understanding that most of these proposals will be vetted publicly and come to the board at a later date.
Yes.
So we'll have our say as to micromanage again.
Absolutely. I look forward to it.
But at this point, I want to congratulate you on a, on a plan. And I think this is the, maybe the beginning of the end. We can start moving forward to having a quality program for all centers. Thank you.
Supervisor Morris?
Yeah, just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time because a lot of this stuff will have to come back to the board. This is just a bigger picture. But just some food for thought. You know, your 90-day access, writing the file is not complete. I didn't realize the state dropped you if your, your completion wasn't done. But also, don't forget, already in our ordinance, this is slightly different, is that 90-day timeframe to get a state license. So I think if we had a mechanism to track that, that would kind of clear out some of those who aren't maybe following everything. Also, this pending issue for code enforcement, they, they seem to have an issue on the word pending.
Oh, yes.
I understand that. I don't know what the word would be because I think as you try or the county or the department tries to rule a lot of these things out, and that's not even talking about the transition into the, what the EIR will bring, there's going to have to be something for our license holders in process. Maybe there's a couple levels of in-process that will help enforcement than just the word pending. I mean, I, I get, while it's a little confusing out there for them, but at the same time, this is not going to be fixed overnight or improved overnight. Everyone's well-intentioned to do so, but we know how that, how time has, and that's all pre-COVID stuff. So fee study, I thought that was already in the works.
We're doing a fee study for the entire county. So the planning and building will be part of that fee study, but a fee study just for cannabis itself. And with the new proposed staffing, it is broken down just with that staffing. So that will be beyond the, the fee study. We'll be bringing back to the board here shortly.
I thought, I knew that part, but I thought the actual cannabis fee study was already starting to take place, given even what you said.
Well, yeah, we're, we're working on to the staffing level, but it won't be just, it won't, it won't be just specific to how much a license should cost. It's how much really it's kind of the, what the, what the department should be charging for each of the, each of aspects of, of building cannabis planting. So this will be specifically just for, at the end, what's it, what's it costs us to produce a license.
Okay. And then just food for thought, you know, I, you know, we have a lot of unclassified land out there that we tried to address a couple of years ago. But again, you know, just not enough time or staff. I suspect you'll see, we've encouraged those with unclassified to look at going into Ag. For district two, you know, already in our ordinance, we, I find out, there's quite not a lot of Ag property in district two. However, we have eliminated any commercial growing on our one, our twos, our threes already, which takes up a lot of downtown Hay Fork, downtown Weaverville. And then we've... And then we've had those obviously overlays or opt-outs here. Weaverville is the water district. So some of that's already in play to help you with, I suspect with that unclassified amount of unclassified land, you're going to see a lot of requests for, to change those zones throughout the county. There's probably some in Weaverville too, but I don't know all the time ahead. Those, thanks for doing this. I think this is a great start. It is going to be a work in progress. There's a lot here.
Yeah, it's, that's why we tried to put it from now, six months, six to 18, and then long-term. But I'll be working with staff to implement those we can immediately. And again, our main objective is to get cannabis staffed up. That is, we just don't have the staff to do it. So the processes that I would do and I show, I'm not trying to say that staff isn't doing their job, staff isn't able to do their job. The joke is, I can do anything you want, I just can't do everything you want. And that's the problem we have right now, we just can't do everything that they want.
Jeff, give me a button. We'll circle around back to you, Supervisor Brown. Oh, is that you Supervisor Finley? Welcome.
Yes, I've got a late, a problem.
We're having a little audio on our side that was not understandable. Could you?
He said he's having latency issues.
Okay. Emma translated, thank you, Ms. Emma. Perhaps if you want to, if you have any specific questions, perhaps you can text it to Dr. Coons, and he will read them from you out loud for the public and then answer them. But since we can't hear you, we're going to ask Supervisor Brown.
I have no questions. I really liked the report and summary. You did a good thorough job of getting all the bits and pieces, and I like the short-term versus long-term plans. So keep looking forward.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Richard, so you brought up the issuing of citations via compliance, via code enforcement. And I know this has been an issue of discussion for a while. I've brought it up in terms of those properties that are running lights at night. Obviously, our, if you're a licensed grower, we don't allow that. So they should at least have a little note from our compliance guys and say, hey, reminder, obviously, if they don't comply, a notice of violations would be required. So I'm not sure how this is not, it seems simple to me, whether it's a generator or a license at night, I mean, lights at night for a license holder, or they're not licensed and it's a code enforcement issue.
Yeah, and where that kind of runs into, and I might, one of the cannabis staff speak this, but it's a violation on both sides. Noise is a noise violation, whether it's cannabis or not cannabis. And within the cannabis program, it's a violation. There's not a real clear process to who takes the lead on that. My personal opinion is it's got more teeth to violate it as a license issue than it is as a noise violation, citation, $50 fine. So we developed a better manual that determines which has the most teeth. Someone running a generator all night long using a cannabis program is a violation of a cannabis program, and in turn, they lose their license because they have much more teeth than a citation that they pay their $50 or $100 fine and move on. So it's kind of a process issue and where the authority should lie. That's why maybe a procedural manual or something like that is important. Because I agree that we had this discussion, and I'll do compliance, which I think will be the right tool.
I think so, that's just me, but unless they just don't pay attention at all, the license holder, I don't think that necessarily would happen, but who knows?
So before I open it up to the public, I do have some comments. We also received some, two letters that I know went to the whole board that perhaps could go in the back if I thought they were articulate with some of their ideas. And I know that they weren't able to be here in the public comment, so we can talk about that later. There is a few things that triggered some ideas and some conversations that have happened in the previous. One of them is I would encourage the county to have an MOU with Fish and Wildlife, so that there would be an understanding when there is a violation or a concern that there is something in place to be able to move that forward through a process. On the ag land and the unclassified land, I think that we have, especially out in South District, which you identified earlier as a more beneficial place to grow cannabis, what prohibits some of those properties is the requirement for a home. So I think that should be revisited, and the premises with licensing, the environmental impact, and the drain on staff, I think is too much multiplied with that. I think that there should be a conversation about farmland being farmland, whether the farmer lives there or not. So I'd like to throw that out there. I also would like to hear some kind of conversation. I know that we have had multiple licensees, and I'm just going to make up dates. Say, apply and pay their fee in March, and for whatever reason, their license doesn't come for an extended period of time, I'll just say June. They've already paid their fee, but then they're relicensed up again in March. And so there's actually three months that they've paid for out of the year that they're actually not cultivating. So I think we need to look at that, and if there's any cultivators that, and I don't know if there would be a specific amount, or if there's just one or many, that if they paid their fee and for no reason other than it hasn't been issued, I'm not putting fault here, and they did not receive a license in order to cultivate, I'd like to see somehow that fee rolled forward if they're going to continue in the program. I have a little heartburn over people paying for a fee, a license, and then being prohibited, and then having to reapply and relicensure. So I think we need to look at that. I think that there are farmers that live in District 1 and 2, primarily in District 1, not so much yours. And I would not want, see their farm terminated or a sunset on them if they choose not to move somewhere else. So those are things that I saw or I've had people contact. Just ideas for you going forward. I appreciate the time and the effort. I know there's, we could sit here for hours and go over specific things, so I'm going to stop talking, and I would like to hear from the public at this time. And so I invite the public to speak if you have any public input.
We have Adrian Keyes.
Adrian Keyes, welcome. Good morning.
Hey, good morning, sorry, that's Adrian Keyes from Hay Fork. I'd like to thank Richard for putting this together. I think it's a really important step in moving forward and salvaging what good we can and making the rest of it better. I would like to officially request that when this advisory group is formed, that Trinity County Agricultural Alliance is represented, you can bring more cumulative experience in this existing program than probably anyone else. Most of our membership has been in it since 2016. And we are also involved with statewide trade associations who are very concerned with these emissions, and so we have access to, there's a tremendous knowledge set, and I would like to be able to contribute. And that's it for today, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anna Rice from Weaverville, can you hear me okay?
Anna, if you could speak a little bit louder, I heard you say your name, but I don't know if anybody else did.
Anna Rice from Weaverville, can you hear me better?
That's better. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I do want to echo Adrian and thanking Richard for this. This is something that I know over the years, we've been asking for, for a while, updates of game plan. So thank you so much for doing that. I do want to briefly touch on Supervisor Chadwick's point about District 1 and 2 farms. I think it is very scary to think about this county stopping those farms functioning. You should probably look at more of the land use perspective. I think we've been talking about in regards to the general plan, looking at ag, friendly parcels, looking at the farms that are already in those two districts. And if they're in good land use, if they're applying by the current ordinance, they should be granted this program. Unless you're going to purchase any property for these people, there's really no incentive for them to sell a property that they can't sell, like trying to sell out. So very important to think of. Number two, timelines. I don't disagree with the timeline that the state has. They do let us know the deficiencies, we have 90 days to address those deficiencies. However, I do think the county should have their own timeline, plus the application. For example, Fish and Wildlife has 50 days to give the applicant a draft agreement. And if they don't meet their own 60-day timeline, they have to agree to whatever was proposed in the initial application. And they do follow those guidelines. So I would really push for not only timelines on the cultivators, but put some timelines on staff too. Kind of going back to something else Supervisor Chadwick said about going months, and over a year now, that some people are not seeing like to keep paying, keep renewing. So very important for our program accountable as well. And speaking of a program, I don't see anything in this presentation about some sort of transition period for this next year. Something that I brought up at the EIR meeting when it came around again. Humboldt Ordinance 2588 was passed in 2017. I just sent it to Emma earlier for clarification to all of you. That allows for interim permits. And from our experiences working with cultivators in that county, they had until the end of the calendar year to apply by the new EIR legislation that had been incorporated in early 2018. So some sort of transition program. If we're going to be putting all of our eggs in the cannabis tax basket this next year, you have to have farms that function, they need to function by March, which gives us about three months. So please look into interim permits, provisional licenses, pay for program accountable time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anybody else?
Rachel Wood.
Rachel Wood. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you so much for putting this together. I do have a lot of concerns. I know that the Cannabis Division previously developed standard operating procedures. An example is the project description that the previous deputy director developed that was then not followed. I think there's also a major gap between the understanding of how these files are reviewed. It goes through several departments, so there isn't really a person to accept responsibility as it moves from administrator to the building departments, to environmental health, et cetera. So I think there's a major understanding of how the workflow actually happens in the planning department. For the CalCannabis 90-day review, it's not like they actually kick you out after 90 days. They give you a deficiency notice that you have to respond to in 90 days. And each time you upload your corrective documents, they have to give you another 90 days. It's not like if you can't provide everything at once in 90 days, they just drop you. Another concern is why is code enforcement part of licensing fees? This should probably be coming out of the cannabis tax fund. I know that code enforcement goes hand in hand, but why is Cannabis Division paying for three members of the sheriff's office directly out of their budget? The funding from the Cannabis Department is used to float the other departments in the office. So employees that should be allocated directly to cannabis are being split with the building department or environmental health. That needs to be part of the considerations for staffing. The Cannabis Department probably needs 10 personnel alone to make it function. And then environmental health, building, et cetera, need their own dedicated staff. And that's not being considered in this plan. The office has had smart guns since 2018, and they haven't utilized it. There probably should be some part-time scanning personnel just to upload these files into smart gun that could be better utilized. The geospatial data that you say you don't have, you do have in GIS. You can have the RCD generate you a map in GIS to show you where all the grows are currently at by parcel. Notice of violation, so previously had a process on how to deal with them. Previously, code enforcement did code enforcement, and compliance did licensing. So I'm unsure of why that process has suddenly fallen through. So I'm just really concerned about this plan because it doesn't fully encompass what the Cannabis Division does, nor does it address its core problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Sorry, Ms. Naomi, I don't know what your last name is.
Okay, this is Dennis, and I'm putting in, Naomi's my wife. I'm on her Zoom account. So my take from this is, overall, I think that the ordinance is going to be affected by the EIR and the general plan at both phases, depending on what is passed in the EIR and general plan. The ordinance may need to be revised, and those effects will then essentially be sandbagged onto the cannabis industry. District 1 and 2 has active permits in good standing with the state and county, and they shouldn't be punished as a matter of personal opinion of just a few landowners in those districts who just happen to be the most vocal. The county currently doesn't even offer every permit that is available with the state and in the medium mixed light permit. How will stacking simply be reintroduced when it isn't covered in the EIR? Does the county plan to do a mitigated deck later to include stacking? If the county wants to include multiple licenses per parcel, why not cover it in the EIR that is currently being drafted and avoid any type of piecemeal claims that later may be raised to attack this issue? The county is already in essence allowed stacking by allowing a few people to get multiple state mixed light licenses, although they only have a medium outdoor license, which allows for 10,001 up to one acre of outdoor cultivation. So their licenses are incongruent with their county allowance. And so there is this weird workaround that the county is allowing certain people to do to stack licenses. That's not really equitable when you consider there's people like myself who have gone through a multi-year process to get a site-specific CECL that actually takes the cultivation impacts environmentally, noise, all of appendix C and G of CECL into account for doing this process year-round. The county is allowing people to get CUPs for medium outdoor permits, which only consider that environmental impacts of doing the grow one time per year, and then allowing people to slide into homes, doing out, doing mixed light, saying they're not having lights, so it's still outdoor. When the state specifically says that as soon as you alter the life cycle of the plant, you're doing mixed light, whether or not you have one watt or 25 watts of supplemental or zero, you are in the mixed light tier 1 or 2 category if you're doing light deprivation. So the county is completely out of whack in so many different facets of this program that it's kind of asinine. And if you really do want to have a steering committee, I feel like having somebody who has actually completed the CECL process with the county would be a useful member. So I'll throw my hat in the ring for participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBudy. Anyone else? Deidra? Deidra Gao.
Hi, thanks, everybody. I'd like to thank you, Richard, for putting this together. I definitely look forward to watching it happen. I agree with a lot of things set by Anna and Adrian also. I'd like to add that having a limit as to when applications can be submitted. We have that before and it makes managing staffing needs and workflows pretty challenging, especially now with a lot of people out because of sickness and things like that. And, you know, it can just be challenging. I also believe that there may only be approximately 20 licenses at this point in Districts 1 and 2. And forcing those people to move out of their homes and relocate, I don't think is reasonable. And at this point, they're also having to do a bunch of CECL compliance, which costs thousands of dollars. And we're going to make them do that now and then relocate and do it again. It just doesn't seem very reasonable to me. But I do appreciate that first thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Veronica Kelly Albius.
Veronica?
Can you hear me?
We can now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. This is Veronica Kelly Albius, Douglas, California. I wanted to thank Richard and the staff for putting this presentation together. I do believe it is, as everyone has already stated, a good step towards, you know, figuring this process out. I would like to, I liked what Director Grove, Supervisor Grove said about input from all stakeholders. I believe it should absolutely be a mix. And the Cannabis, Adrian and his crew would probably bring some much-needed information. However, it definitely have a more balanced approach, I think, from all of Trinity County. So I do advocate for that as well. And I just want to remind everybody that the state, we get in line with the state, which may make work easier. But the state has given each county the autonomy to create what works for their county. And so I just continue to encourage all of the process to include county as a whole, which does include the Cannabis industry, but the county as a whole. And something we said earlier about timelines, just a reminder for staff, you know, each project, each person at Cannabis Cultivator, they have one project to keep track of. Staff has all of them. So tying their hands on a timeline that would, that may fall through for whatever reasons during this COVID process or in a process at all could be detrimental to the county as a whole. Just granting it because they didn't fall within a certain timeline, that they have all the projects to consider as opposed to just one, which the consultants have project by project and the growers themselves, project by project. So I do ask you to really give that one some thought, maybe not do that. And that's all I wanted to say. Just thank you very much for moving forward on all of this. Thank you.
Hello, this is Patrick Allen from Solier.
Dr. Patrick.
Hi there. Thanks for the presentation. It adds some more complexity to kind of understand, but it's good to see things moving forward. I would just like to say that as somebody who has been in the CUP with the county for going on two years, it's quite nerve-wracking to hear all this stuff because it feels like there's no fold-in. And what I mean by that is there's no acknowledgement of the investment and the stake that we've, that some of us have put in to try to navigate this. And I understand that that's kind of on my shoulders a little bit as I've gone through this process for quite a while. But I really would like to encourage, as we move forward, to come up with language that acknowledges folding in existing stakeholders and doesn't try to narrow the field as it relates to changes. With, you know, and for me, that's kind of important. So if I'm forced to rezone or do things in the future, I would really like some clear guidance and time to be able to make any adjustments necessary as a CE holder that's gone through a lot of confusion because of zoning and other things. I really just encourage staff to really look at the stakeholders and try to include instead of exclude. And I really encourage, I understand that the county has the right from the state to come up with an ordinance and a program that works for the county. But it becomes really, really confusing and really hard when, you know, you got a county license that ends in March, and you got a state license that ends in June, and you got the county that doesn't talk about premises and clear guidance on expansion and things like that, that the state has clear guidance on and there's already kind of defined. And as the county goes, I would just really encourage you to really look at those things and keep working on them with the people who exist as well as opening it up for other people. But it's going to be really hard on some of us. And there's probably a lot that I'm missing there, but I really encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anybody else on the line?
Yeah, this is Lisa Wright. I've been trying to raise my hand, but I think I was actually doing a clap signal or something. Am I available to speak now?
Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Wright.
Okay, thank you very much, Lisa Wright Lewiston. Richard, thank you so much for taking the time and effort to put this together. I think it's a very helpful guide. And I see this as something for administration and not necessarily for the board to micromanage, but to comment on and to let you manage as a qualified professional. First off, I would like to, on code enforcement abatement being paid out of the Cannabis Fund, I don't think that's appropriate. I really never have unless you're enforcing the program itself. That's really the way the state law is written for the use of funds. However, if you are going to put it in here, and it seems like you're going to continue to, then I would like to see the expenses returned in the form of the fine revenue to at least offset the cost. Otherwise, you're using Cannabis Farmers money to make money for the county by, you know, through your abatement program. I would also like to see that broken out what part of county council is attributed to the, we also have a quick picture, and those funds being returned. I like your timeline. I would like something a little bit tighter than six to 18 months on the mid-range, something more realistic, maybe in the form of project management plan. I also really like adding the environmental expertise. That is desperately needed. We have great, you know, admin people there, but adding expertise will certainly help improve the program. Another thing that I think would be beneficial is you had mentioned the 90-day review for completeness, and that's been addressed. But I'd also like to see a timeline for renewal. So at the state level, you have 30 days to renew your license with CFA or UFRD law, basically, right? So you need to get that process started within 30 days of expiration. I'd like to see something tied in as well to the county level. Applications received only December through March 31st. I really don't see that as being feasible. That was prior to your time, Richard, but it was a huge kind of cluster to have all these renewals coming in that were due, you know, March 31st. So I would like to see that certainly extended, along with timelines put in place for completion of application review. Of course, I'm not in favor of eliminating District 1 and 2. I have a license in District 1, and I think that would be taking of a property rate. I fully agree with removing the cap and also moving it to the egg department for business license issuance. You have a one-time land use permit and annual business licenses, which is what is allowed by the state, not local jurisdictions issuing their own licenses per se. So with that said, thank you so much, Richard. Happy to assist in any way, as always, and I appreciate you bringing this together.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. There is anybody else? Go ahead and speak. We're not seeing all the participants. Dr. Kuns, did Supervisor Finley text you with any specific questions?
He did not. I mean, he texted me, but he said he had no questions.
Okay, thank you. So not seeing anymore, or not hearing anyone, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Supervisor Morris?
Yeah, I just had a couple of clarifications and questions. I think we had some great comments on the phone just now. Thank you, everyone. You heard a lot of those on the phone, of our legacy growers who've been with this program even before it started, when we started talking about this. So they really have a lot of experience, probably good and bad, on trying to build this airplane. I do, one, a couple of things that came up. We did have that window of renewal license, January to March, and it did prove to be very time-consuming, cumbersome for staff because it was just this pipeline of renewal. So that may need to be reevaluated with that in mind because it was way before you arrived, Richard. Also, you know, I certainly am not in favor if we have a, we don't have that many in District 2 licensed growers, but they certainly are our legacy growers and have been here very early. I don't know of any complaints about them. Complaints I do get is something, and they may not even be in my district, but borderline are folks that aren't licensed and not getting an overview by code enforcement. And, you know, there's some other great comments that were said earlier, but I think the big burning question is what do we do in the next three to four months to make sure we have some renewals going so people can start prepping for next season? I mean, we really have three months to get them, you know, making sure their renewal license. That's the lowest hanging fruit, I think, in terms of that needs addressing. So I just want to emphasize a couple of those points that I heard.
Yeah, and that's why I put out, we're going to borrow both Angie and David to come over and just do nothing but screen for our CECL because that's a log jam right now as a CDs. So that's what we're going to, we'll start with that right away, but yes, it is. We have renewals that need to be processed, and hopefully by the end of today, we'll also have a little more clear idea of how to do some of that too.
And the new ones, I understand. So that was it. So, and this was a presentation, so there's no action by the board, so there's no motion needed and there's nothing else to go on. I would encourage you to maybe bring this back after your timetables and going in the future, but I won't be here, so I won't be following up on that. I want to thank you. As you heard, there was continuous gratitude of thanks to you and to staff for putting this together. I think it was well done. I believe it was Supervisor Grove's that requested this a few months ago. And so I want to recognize that he did ask for it and thank him for that. So with that, unless you have anything to conclude, I think that about wraps up this presentation. I would encourage the public to continue any things that they wanted to bring to your attention, to email you, and then you can decide whether or not it's worth talking out loud to staff. But thank you. It was appreciated by the community and the board. So I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your feedback.
Okay, so is the board good to go forward? I would love to have staff talk, and I know you want to probably address some of the things, but because of our timetable that you're aware of, I can't right now. So I appreciate you being here and thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. So we are going to jump backwards into consent calendar, and there is only one thing left, or one thing at all, and this is a grant, Grants 2.1. These items include routine non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Since there is only one item, we won't be doing that. Grants 2.1, approve the memorandums of understanding between the county and Greater Hayfork Valley Park and Recreation, North Fork Range, and Southern Trinity Area Rescue Subrecipients for Community Development Block Grants, CDBG. Program Income Projects That Made a Community Need and Low to Moderate Income National Objective. No Impact to the General Fund. $292,000 from the CDBG Program Income. Do we have Susie Cocklin's on the line?
She's available to answer questions. I just asked her if she's on Zoom, so.
Welcome, Susie. Does anybody, pardon?
She's logging on right now.
Okay, does anybody from the board have any questions regarding this matter? Supervisors on Zoom?
No.
Is Susie with us? Supervisor Finley, do you have any questions or comments on this?
He's chatting.
He's chatting? No, okay, thank you. Okay, so while we're waiting for Susie, I'm just going to go ahead and open it up to the public if there is from anybody on the public that wants to make a comment. We don't see anybody, so Susie?
Susie's on.
Thank you. Thank you for working on this project and your diligence and seeing so many projects come to fruition. We really appreciate you and all you've done. I don't hear any questions from the supervisors before we bring it back for a motion. Is there anything you would like to say?
No, I think it's wonderful that we have the opportunity in several of our communities to use some of our Community Development Block Grant Program Income for very worthy and long-time coming projects. Once we get through this process, and as the CAO will tell you, there are many we have to jump through. We have our first PI project through the process, thank God. That's the Trinity Center Fire Apparatus Structure. And then followed by these three projects. We will use up the majority of our program income until some additional housing rehab loans are paid off. But the expenditure of the Program Income Funds makes us eligible for future CDBG funds, which we will be applying for in January. Some of that will be for some road construction projects and economic development for some businesses.
Well, you are a force to be reckoned with. We really appreciate your tenacity in going after all these grants on behalf of the citizens of Trinity County. So with that, I bring it back to the board and would love to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I would like to point out that every district but District 2 got a piece of the pie. So I think we're not always Weaverville-centric around here.
Well, thank you. We actually, District 2 is lost out due to, believe it or not, our income levels, the way it's explained to me from Susie.
Yeah, that's very true.
Thank you, Susie.
We have a motion by Supervisor Grove and a second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
A hearty aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a subsequent, the 4.2? Or 4.1? Okay, 4.2. Requested action, take the following actions regarding a project to convert the board chambers into a Zoom room. One, waive formal bid requirements due to COVID-19 pandemic. Two, authorize sole sourcing of project. Three, accept the quote from DGI Communications. And four, authorize the county administrative officer to sign any documents necessary to complete this project. Dr. Kuns?
Yes, I'm going to ask Susie to, she's been more involved. Yes, I'm going to ask Susie to, she's been more involved in, with the vendor. But what we're asking is that we're able to extract this request. Because of the funding we have, it has to be extended by the end of the year, which definitely is a time to go out to a full RFP and receive all the bids. And again, with that, we, we fall into the exemption, I believe, and we met with county council. Because of the timeline, because of the type of product and expertise, we're working with Zoom. And when you work with Zoom, they refer us to one vendor. So even if we went out to RFP, the one vendor that Zoom works with, I would still probably end up being that vendor. So I'll let Susie go ahead and finish on what.
One question, is it a calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar year until the, by December 31st of this year.
Okay, so we have 30 days. Thank you.
Richard pretty much covered it for us.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Richard pretty much covered everything. In an attempt to maintain consistency in the platforms that the board and the public is used to seeing, we reached out to Zoom to see about converting us to a Zoom room. DGI Communications is the vendor that they work with to create Zoom rooms for agencies and companies looking to do so. And so they have the most expertise in integrating the equipment with the Zoom software and see everything work well together.
That's awesome. It's a little bit of a long-term dream for this to happen for me. And I would just hope that if there's any cares or any funding available later, that you would look into the remote district places that the Wi-Fi is limited to have a public access. So I, I know in District 4 and 5 and 4, and 3, and just really Weaverville has a good coverage, but if there could be a community room that could receive the Zoom at a, at a facility and the communities don't have funding, so I would just ask that you put that on your plate if there's future funding because that was one of the things that I was hoping to see done. So I appreciate this very much. Are there any other questions from the board?
I do have a quick question. You might want to ask the vendor. In my, in my experience during the Zoom world, some state agencies are not using Zoom for a variety of security reasons. And so on calls that went with us in other committees with state agencies, they're either just calling in or there's some workaround. So I don't know if there's a physical workaround with the Zoom or you have to do something different. So something to have on your radar so you don't get caught off guard.
Supervisor Grove?
We have questions now.
Supervisor Brown?
I would just echo what Supervisor Morris said, can we use our audio visual for any application or is it only going to be limited to Zoom?
Can, can we use WebEx in the same platform if we have to talk to somebody else or teams?
I'd love to check on that. I don't have that answered.
Yeah, I can look into that, but I assume that it would, we're going to have, it's going to be pushed it through a computer that's located here in the room that would have network connectivity. So I think that we would be able to launch another.
Application.
Application on that if we were hosting, if we were, you know, participating in a meeting with somebody else and they were hosting it some other way.
And maybe this is another variation on this question. It's Supervisor Brown asked. So we have, well, as we saw today, a lot of people just also phoning in sometimes and are past meetings, phoning in because they can't do Zoom, as Supervisor Chadwick also pointed out. I assume it'll have a capability just to phone in.
If a Zoom room could have the same capabilities that we have to be able to just to phone into our Zoom meetings as they are right now, you don't have to be attending via video broadcasting. You can call the number and give in the meeting ID. It'll have a meeting ID and a.
Just like.
Just like it does right now. It's just if the Zoom room essentially takes what we're doing now and just converts this entire room and makes it a little bit simpler for us to launch the meeting and host it from this location as opposed to having to go through all the setup process. And it integrates our mics and everything, so we have better audio for both board members in the room and participants outside of the area.
That was one issue we discussed, although right now we're, we're pulling the microphone from sometimes a camera and then elsewhere. This will, each, each microphone will be connected to the Zoom. So when you speak to the microphone, it says you're, you're on a headset. Each board member will have a, a monitor that's connected and they will have monitors behind as opposed to the camera system. So it'll be, it'll move us up into the 21st century.
Fantastic. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody on the line that would like to contribute to this conversation?
Yes, John Brower, I'd like to comment on this item.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I think it is important to include a capability to, to use other apps besides Zoom and also to have some sort of mobile capabilities for having public hearings and a, and a public process in other locations like the Performing Arts Center in Weaverville, Fairgrounds in Hayfork, where we could have some in-person participation in a COVID-safe way. And hopefully we can use this hardware and capabilities for more mobile participation throughout the county. There's definitely times when it makes sense to have things in other locations than Weaverville. This is a great step forward. I encourage approval of this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brow. Is there anybody else on the line waiting to speak?
Yes, this is Veronica.
Go ahead, Ms. Albi.
Veronica Kelly Albi, St. Louis City. I will admit that a lot of what she was saying kind of got lost in the audio. And I think the biggest thing for, that I wanted to state is it's so important to be able to have any kind of access or participation in these meetings. So any hardware or software that's being considered that makes it easier for people to hear, to see and participate, I think I'm pretty sure is the number one goal. But I do notice that sometimes with the Zoom, they've got the up and down and especially audio, being able to hear everybody clearly. I think that this is going to be our, our mode of participation for a little bit. So having that as easy and hearable and seeable and interactionable as possible, if that's a word, is the, is the goal for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So it looks like there's no one else waiting. We're going to bring it back to the board. I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Give it to Jeremy, it's just a.
Motion by Supervisor Morris, second by Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Brown, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris, how do you vote? Yes, thank you. Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a final yes.
Thank you, Dr. Kuns. Okay, our second subsequent.
Is a closed session.
Is a closed session item. And so I just want to review, I did not leave anything out since we were jumping. Nope, we're good. So the subsequent closed session item, 4.1, to be heard in closed session pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N2252 Conference Regarding COVID-19. Participants: County Health Officer, County Council, County Administrative Officer and Director of Social Services. That we will do that in closed session. And is there any public comment on this closed session? We thank you all and stay healthy. Thank you. We'll go into closed session.